I already signed the same.
It's the same one.
Okay.
It's a great article on the school funding. And also they find that it's not the reason.
Oh, I didn't. You said you wanted to say.
I already signed it.
Yeah, and that's because, um, yeah, Rosemary.
Break the next one.
It's like her journalism. They do, they do really nice work and I think pedagogy is hugely valuable. That one was really strong, so I haven't written Rosemary yet yet.
Oh, perfect.
So this is.
You never know the backstory. Yeah, you never know the backstory about, about that stuff until.
Okay. Hey, another neighbor. How's it going?
Okay, so, cause this one is, these are all full. Oh, is it a backside?
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. It doesn't hurt.
I think I should probably continue on that one, so you don't miss it up. Sorry. This is nine, ten, nine, five, nine. Yeah, sorry. They were one dollar.
I'm gonna share mine with everyone.
You need yours.
I'm like, I'm like, do I have to share with her? Can I just share with my?
Right, uh, can we silence our phones? I have two of them.
You got a burner?
No, I gotta work. Right, uh, seeing as we're a little past seven o'clock, uh, I will call the May ninth Planning Commission meeting to order. So instead of approval of the agenda, I'm gonna kind of jump the gun. These are things I noticed after we had published the agenda and it was just clerical, if you will, on setting the agenda. So technically I'd like to amend the agenda. To have number six be new business instead of old business. It's an old approval, new item. Uh, and just, it's more appropriate to be new business. And then number seven is not new business. It is actually discussion items. Cause there's no action being taken per se. So, I mean, I can technically make a motion.
May I make the motion to proceed with the change of the agenda as outlined by the chair?
I appreciate that. Motion, Mr. Dana?
Second.
Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, perfect. Uh, hindsight, I should have asked if anyone else has other changes to the agenda. All right, we're a good group of speaking now or for withholding our peace. Uh, item three, uh, any additions, changes, corrections to the minutes? Of March fourteenth, so we didn't have an April meeting. All right, uh, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to accept the agenda, or the minutes as presented.
I so move.
Mr. Dana with the motion?
Second.
Ooh, it's a tie. We'll give it to Ms. Blackmar with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, at this time, we'd invite members of the public who would like to make comments on items not related to agenda items. Uh, also I'd remind folks that, uh, it's public comment, not public conversation. So, uh, you're welcome to ask questions, but I don't want people to be surprised that we will not respond. All right, seeing none. Item five, uh, reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staff. Ms. Blackmar, will you, uh, start us off?
Yeah, we had, um, from the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, there is a discussion that we'll be proceeding with about expanding, uh, the parking, uh, expanding paid parking in the area of the new Innovation Hub and the Oxford Community Arts Center. And that would be, that's something that the police department is considering in a somewhat anticipatory way. Um, imagining that there will be increased use and need for parking regulation in those areas. Um, and so that was something that we looked at and I think we'll be, as I understand it, there will be a more detailed proposal process and outreach to some of the adjoining areas, including the Oxford Community Arts Center. And then the other thing that's been a topic for the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board is, um, trying to get ahead of and figure out how, what minor tweaks we can make on the city side to help facilitate transportation next year to school, given the transportation cha- uh, changes at Talawanda School District. And I think everyone's probably familiar with those, but that, those include the fact that there will be no busing for students at the high school level. And there will be no transport, bus transportation for students residing within two miles of the school. There are changes to the timetable for the schools. And so the combination of those factors is likely to create congestion. And, you know, we would love to get ahead of that with more walking and biking to school. And so we've been trying to think about how can we, um, make minor modifications that will ensure that there are safe routes to school. So, um, that's something that we're all working on and I think thanks to Councilmember Prithrich for kind of making sure that we're gonna get out there and actually look at our safe routes, uh, in the next week while we still have kind of school-type conditions in place, um, so that we can make sure that we're doing what we can reasonably do to get ready for, I think it's August sixteenth or something like that. So this, this new world is coming up on us really, really quickly. So trying to get ready.
Dr. Prithrich?
I guess I would just, uh, Climate Action Steering Committee, um, we hosted an open house on the Climate Action Plan, which I think a number of you guys attended, which many of the climate action goals were embedded in the, in the comprehensive plan, which has already been adopted by City Council. Um, but this gets a little bit more into some of the weeds on how we can mitigate and adapt to, uh, climate change. So I think we're trying to like get some more public input on that and then it will be probably coming through the, uh, plane, Climate Action Steering Committee on the council. But again, some of those things, the, uh, the implementation items are planning-related, delay of transportation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bracken?
I missed the last environmental meeting because I was away doing my own environmental research, so.
Tell us about your.
No. Happy to.
Okay, um, actually, um, Housing Advisory Commission did not meet last, uh, last month. I did wanna, um, bring up Sharefest, um, which is an annual event that takes place in Oxford. So that, um, Miami Moveout can produce less waste. So I just wanted to let anyone that might be watching, um, that Sharefest takes place in Chestnut Fields off of Chestnut Avenue. So this is all Google-able from Tu- uh, Thursday through Tuesday from nine to five. And you can bring like furniture and fit, uh, not fitting, furniture and clothes and food that's left over, um, from Moveout. So I just wanted to mention that.
And e-waste, and e-waste.
And e-waste. And e-waste, anything with a plug. And I was not going to forget that we definitely need volunteers to pick up things from the residence halls, such as food and that clothing and furniture.
And e-waste.
And e-waste.
I'm sorry, I have a tub in the garage.
So that's also open to the community to do those things as well. So I just wanted to put that out there for the community.
We were, we hear.
Do you like to proceed with the Community Investment Corporation? I think that the staff, the board of the CIC, uh, as well as Seth Parker McCroppenbaker, who is the executive director or the executive of the program in the city, are recruiting people to go into the Lee A. Fisher, it's an entrepreneurial center. And they're recruiting people to do that. And if this is not in, uh, anything but the, the best taste, that's where I last saw our departed member of the, uh, administration of Oxford, Joe Nolan. I saw him there and then I simply wanted to say, I think we were fortunate to have him. I think it hurts to, it helps, excuse me, to have his record before the administrative people who review such things. And I wanted to draw that to our attention. But the CIC is vital and it's, they're recruiting people for the Fisher Building and they're successful in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Uh, I'm not assigned to the other board, so I have no report.
I'll fix that. So reporting on behalf of Historic Architecture, I don't remember the sequence of, they almost always fall back-to-back and I don't remember if this one was before the last one. But nonetheless, um, the items we talked about were updates on 131 West High, 48 East Park, Ten, uh, North Beach and 22 South Beach. Really that was just, uh, staff's opportunity to update us on how things were moving forward and, um, uh, you know, just basically any barriers or limitations they had. I will say, uh, with 131 West High, um, for those of you who weren't aware, the Chair, Chris Goblin, did speak, uh, in front of council and expressed, uh, concern and, um, asked for clarification for some items. Uh, extreme, long story short, because it is captured in another public record, um, but it basically has to do with, uh, the cart in front of the horse as it refers to occupancy permits and, um, the building being rented out prior to, uh, certificate of occupancy and all appropriate, um, permits being issued. So, um, Mr. Goblin did speak on our commission's behalf, I'm sorry, HAPC's. Um, we also talked, uh, and we'll have more information out on historic walking tours. Um, in the fall, there will be a series traditional, uh, four-week that, uh, Mr. Smith and I participated in. I believe Mr. Dana's been, uh, at some of them, uh, where we have neighborhoods or streets throughout. But then they're also adding historic, uh, cemetery tours, um, just to feature some of the, um, uh, you know, prominent names and hidden stories, uh, in, in our town. And another thing that, it was funny, we didn't have a business item, it was a discussion item, but we had quite a robust, um, Edna Southern had, uh, years ago piqued the interest of HAPC and if you read the title, it's Historic and Architectural Preservation. It's not historical architect or historic architecture. Uh, so she really got our commission thinking and moving on the story of Oxford. Dana worked really hard on the, um, Uptown Park Historical Marker. But this time, we had a fairly robust and fun discussion about indigenous, uh, culture and preservation. Just an initial discussion because obviously, uh, the city and the county and townships and there's a lot of jurisdictions in the equation. But, uh, it was really fascinating and, um, after we adjourned, a couple of us actually just sat and we kept looking at maps and, um, so, uh, the reason I mention that is I think it's exciting that we're really, uh, at least the commission, yes, we have fabulous buildings. We have a lot of tangible things you can look at, feel, touch. But at the same time, we also have tremendous stories that, um, happen in buildings that are long gone or in the case of indigenous occupants, uh, were before any buildings. All right, we, oh my gosh, Mr. Perry. Where are my manners?
It's okay. Um, today was the monthly, uh, Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional, um, Commission, Council of Governments meeting with, uh, transportation. Since our transportation funder, um, there's a couple of things that may be of interest, uh, just, there's, because of the administration of federal funds, uh, this group that I sit on on behalf of the city has to approve any changes in funding. And so the Western Hills Viaduct is one of those big projects, if you're familiar with that, that continues to move along in the process. Um, and then the other thing that I know Oxford is, uh, promoting all the time, uh, May is Bike Month. Next week is Bike Week and next Friday is Bike to Work Day. So for those.
I work from home.
There's that as well. So for, for those in the community that want to leverage that opportunity to encourage their neighbors, it's a good opportunity to do that next week and particularly next Friday. That was announced at that meeting as well.
Perfect. Mr. Moore?
No additional reports from me tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to new business, uh, PC 2022 dash zero two, 5470 College Corner Pike, conditional use extension request. Uh, if, just to refresh everyone's memory, this was for the new hotel. The applicant is John Bayer from Bayer Becker and I will, uh, accept the motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I so move.
All right, motion and second, Mr. Dana and Dr. Prithrich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I love saying this, Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, thank you Chairman Watt. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. So what we have for you tonight is an extension request. This is an extension of a conditional use that was previously granted June of last year by City Council. Uh, of course, I went to Planning Commission for recommendation before I went to council last year. This is for a hotel. It's a Holiday Inn Express at 5470 College Corner Pike. And, uh, the applicant for that original request was High Point Lodging. And the property has since sold after the conditional use was approved. So it's owned by Oxford Hotels LLC. That was sold in August of last year. And it is still an undeveloped site, so it has not yet come in for building permit approval to begin construction of the hotel. The site area is 3.4 acres. This is an 83-room hotel, so nothing about the nature of the plans that have been submitted has changed at this point. Um, the intent is to simply move forward with the plans that were already approved, just to extend the deadlines that it's subject to. This conditional use was approved June 21st of, well, should say 22. It says 23 up there, but it should say 22, my apologies. And this is a six-month extension, which the code does allow for. And just to reacquaint you with the details of the application, so this is the site location. This is across from Wildberry and next to AP Church and south from Walmart and Schneider Electric. And then here's a look at the zoning classifications in the area. So the site is of course zone general business or GB, so within the GB zone, hotels were a conditional use. Uh, none of the zoning classifications within the area have changed since the time of the request when it came in last year. And then this is just a quick photo showing you the site. This is looking north on 27th. So it would be on the right-hand side of the roadway is where the subject site is located. Then here is a bird's eye view in case we need to refer back to it again. Again, here's the Wildberry Incense Factory as well as AP Church over here to the southeast. And then a look again at the aerial, this was the original site plan that had been provided to staff in February of 2022. This was not found favorable by our fire chief mainly because there wouldn't be a way to access the building on all sides. Um, there was one entrance at the time, so the parking area was kind of situated off to the west and to the north of the building. So what was ultimately submitted in May, um, was a different layout that had the parking wrapped all the way around the building, which was again per the fire chief's request. Um, this had included one single curb cut off of 27 right over here. And ultimately the approved site plan, so what you're seeing on the screen now, this is considered the approved site plan that goes with that conditional use. And this is showing the landscaping details that are approved as well that would be enforced at the time of the building permit. Um, and you can see, of course, that a notable add was that second entrance, which is across from Ray's Way. So kind of forming a four-way intersection of sorts down in that lower corner. And then here is another look at the building elevations. Um, nothing really changed with respect to the elevations compared to initial submittal leading up to the approval. Um, it is a four-story building, but they needed a slight waiver to the building height in order to get that approved. Uh, but they were able to obtain that waiver through the original process. Um, some of the conditions actually affected the signage. And so I thought this would be a good opportunity to just show the commission, um, what has transpired since the approval and how the applicant has amended their sign plans to comply with those conditions. So looking at the original signage, um, on the building, so they would like two wall signs, so they were approved for a total of two. And each of these wall signs was totaling a bit above 16 feet in height initially. And that has since been revised to be three feet, seven inches tall. So, and these are to scale comparatively, so comparing the left with the right, so we're going from the red to the green. So, um, at this point, staff considers the green signage that's displayed there, at least what's displayed within the dashed green box, to be the approved signage for the project. And then with respect to the freestanding sign, so this would be at the northernmost entrance. So there is the location, right there. And then again, a look at the original versus the revised. So, um, the freestanding sign is being shortened to comply with the code maximum height of six feet in this case. So it's going from eight feet to six feet. So our staff recommendation is to grant an approval extension and this is per Oxford zoning code, section 1147.02E2. And this action would extend the deadlines as follows. So the applicant would be required to submit a building permit to our office no later than December 21st of this year and would be required to be in substantial operation by December 21st of 2024. And, um, as I said before, it's the same exact plans. Um, they are all provided again in your packet, um, for you to take a look at. So, um, nothing is really changing with respect to any of that and all the same approval conditions would apply if the extension request were granted. concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Good evening. Um, I'm Etta Reed with Bayer Becker, 110 South College. I'm here on behalf of John Bayer this evening. And Zach's correct, um, nothing has changed in the plans. It's just it's taken a while for our client to just get all the design team together. The plans are basically 90% complete. The geotechnical evaluations were done last week. We're just waiting on the report to button up and make any changes to the plans. So we feel like we can make all this work with the extended deadlines. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Reed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this matter? When you come to the podium, if you could introduce yourself and provide your address.
Uh, Craig Erickson, 5280 Morning Sun Road, Oxford, Ohio. I was just wondering, uh, the new owner is Ohio or Oxford Hotel LLC? Who owns the property?
I don't believe there's.
Who's the operator?
So, so two points, um, the intent of this is public comment and I don't believe the owner is, uh, changed from anything that's been submitted.
Well, you said the property was sold to somebody. I was just wondering.
It was sold since the original conditional use was approved.
Okay. To.
That's per the auditor's website.
But the mailing address is still Noblesville, Indiana, which suggests it could be the same owner or is it the same?
Yeah, and, and it's, it's, as far as I know, there's.
So when the conditional use application went through, obviously my client did not own that property. He wasn't gonna buy a piece of property if he couldn't get the zoning approved. And so, um, essentially after he purchased, after he got his approval and knew it was a, a good project and it was gonna happen, that's when he purchased it. So Mr. Shodri is Oxford LLC. It's one and the same.
All right, any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to close public hearing.
I so move. I so, second.
Dr. Prithrich with the motion, Mr. Dana with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned to private session or commission session or non-public. Pick your voice.
So what I'd like to say is there's no reason to not extend this.
What's that again?
I, I, I was just saying that I do not see any reason to not extend this.
Right, okay.
So that's my opinion.
I heard you.
Yeah, gotcha.
I guess I just have kind of a comment. Uh, I applaud the applicant and the, um, representatives, um, for their proactiveness and, and timeliness. I know that's been a struggle on a number of city commissions and boards, um, having, uh, kind of, you know, folks in a timely fashion work with our, uh, city staff, so I just wanted to, uh, thank them for that. And, uh, yeah, really, the benefit of this is we have clarification on things that were left to be determined. So if anything, I think it's more solid. That's just my comment.
So we're ready for a motion? I move approval?
I so.
It's like a fight for second. Uh, Dr. Prithrich with the motion. We'll give Vice Chair Rosenberg the second this time. All those, oh, wait, this is a, uh, roll call?
You can do voices.
Uh, right, if there's no objections, I'll do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on to item seven, uh, these are discussion items. Uh, discussion items, uh, just in consultation and, I guess, uh, reviewing props, processes and procedures. These are discussion items that are, um, things that staff has brought to us, they're, they're work items, so to speak. So the intent of this session, there is no vote that will take place. It's an opportunity for, uh, staff to present and ask the commission questions for us to have some discussion, to provide clarity, potential direction and/or thematic, uh, concepts to staff. So with that being said, um, for all intents and purposes, just for clarity, uh, this will be treated the same as a work session. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Watt. I do need to enter into public record, there was a request to extend this item to a later meeting, uh, from the, uh, agent for the property owner, uh, from Mr. Pete McCarthy. I've got a copy of the letter if, if you'd like to see it. Uh, we also got a request from the architect of the construction company, uh, stating very similar things. So I just want to enter that into record. Um, I can explain that further or I can continue with what this, the reason the staff put this on the agenda in the first place, however you'd like to.
Floor is yours, sir.
All right. So, um, the, the city staff received a notice from, uh, the county because of a request, uh, for a, uh, zone change for, uh, three parcels of land along the north edge of the city. So we've been calling this and the county calls this 525 North Campus Avenue, which was the former site of a church, uh, at the dead end of Campus Avenue, uh, currently outside the city limits. And then there's a couple of other parcels as well that are included, uh, with this potential project that the county, uh, has been on the county dockets for, uh, Rural Planning Commission, uh, the, uh, and also now the Board of Zoning Appeals for the county. Because the county, uh, has rezoned this to B3. Uh, so this is outside the city limits, which allows for a hotel to be requested through the county zoning process as a conditional use. And there's actually a hearing scheduled for May 16th for that. So, uh, the county has, uh, has allowed the city to have some, uh, awareness and input in the process. We actually met with county staff last week, uh, to at least be aware of the project and provide some commentary, uh, although it's a fairly tight turnaround. Through the process of the developers, uh, being interested in building a hotel, uh, there's a need for public utilities, water and sewer. Uh, and so their desire is to not use private water and sewer, but to use public water and sewer. And so through that process, uh, they have learned about the city's policy for annexation. When there's a request for city-owned utilities, there's a requirement that City Council, uh, approve that. Either through a, and, an agreement for future annexation or a requirement for annexation at the time of, uh, utilities. And so that brought, brought about this discussion that there's a possibility that there could be a petition filed for annexation. The city doesn't have control over that process under the state statute. That process can be initiated, uh, by the property owner or an agent. And so to the credit of, um, the, uh, the owner's agent, uh, there has been some confusion about what the process is for annexation. And, and so that may have been what brought about the request to extend this to a later meeting. Um, I will also say that, uh, in the past, uh, city staff have acted as the agent for annexations, uh, on behalf of the owners. Uh, when we know what the development's gonna be, what it's adjacent to the city, where it seems pretty straightforward. So the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan has, um, uh, recommended that there be a joint land use plan with the surrounding jurisdictions and that there be an update to the annexation policy or the process. That hasn't happened. So now we have a annexation request that may or may not come to City Council in the future as part of a utility connection request. future as part of a utility connection request. And so there is a clock that starts ticking once that petition becomes filed, which it hasn't yet. And then there's a limited amount of time where city council can respond. And so there have been annexations in the past few years where a land use and a zoning has not been established as part of the annexation, so that defaults to, by state, by state law, to the township zoning, which makes it difficult and a little bit confusing for the owner and also for the community to determine what the rules are when you have a property that's within the corporate limits, that is actually, doesn't have a city zoning designation. So what we have done is, we wanted to put this on the agenda, the city manager and I, in order to make the planning commission aware and have a discussion about this. And I apologize for presenting it in a way where it gave the impression that there was going to be legislation or a vote that would be final, and there wouldn't be future opportunity for public input. So I appreciate you amending the agenda to make that clear.
Would you kindly just repeat the last part of what you said?
Sure. I just wanted to say that I apologize for writing a memo and creating the perception that there would be legislation that would be voted upon tonight that would be final, where there would be no opportunity for future comment.
Right, thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay. So what I wanted to do was give you some background on our, what the city zoning is in this area, what the future land use map shows for this area as well. And you can take that for what it's worth, or you can, you've got two representatives that sit on council, and you can have a discussion later. We can await the petition as well and see what happens with that. It's really up to you. But it's a good opportunity to, to discuss. So as I mentioned before, there's six and three-quarter acres. It is along the northern edge of the city, and there are three parcels. And what I want to do here is, yes, a hotel is proposed, but I think it's important to back up a little bit and ask the question, is annexation appropriate in this area? And I think city staff, in general, want to create opportunity for development. And so if it's done in the right way, and the fiscal benefits and risk are considered, it's generally a good thing. So getting down to the site design and the land use are steps that typically should come later in the process. However, an annexation would, request would maybe never come about if there were not a proposal to trigger that in the first place. So those kind of have to be balanced together in that discussion. So the reason for kind of the contiguous nature of these three parcels is to have a connection to 732 for the proposed use. So that's why it looks the way it does. And so it's assembled in that way. There is a public roadway that's abutting the site as well, which was the access to the church. So those two right-of-ways do connect. And then the next slide shows the current zoning designations of the city zoning. And you can see the MU district, which is where the Mallett parking lot is, for the Mallett Hall Sports Facility. And then you can also see the North Campus Avenue, which is a kind of a medium-density residential area along North Campus Avenue, R3MS. And then you can also see the OI, or the Office Industrial, along 732, which is an office district for medical offices and those types of things along the 732 corridor. And the next slide shows the future land use map. And if you read the commentary in the staff memo, the rural designation is not intended to say that it will never change. It's just, it was simply silent on changing the land use intentionally, because the goal was for the community to focus on what is within our jurisdiction, not saying that we can't have a land use change outside the corporate limits in the future, and we should be having that discussion. So now that there's a proposal for development that is abutting the city, it's a good time to have that. To the south is the Urban Mile Square Neighborhood, which is generally intended to be residential. There could be some small business within that. You might remember the neighborhood commercial discussion from before, kind of the small pocket commercial that serves the surrounding residents. The campus designation to the east is obviously referring to Miami. I did allude to that in my staff report, that that might be a land use that speaks to kind of the mass, that could potentially support an institutional-type development while still having some, some strong planning principles for connectivity. To the west is the Employment Corridor, and then a small section of preserves and green space where the dog park is. The Employment Corridor is really an ideal location for job growth and increasing tax base, and that's a fiscal benefit to the city. So those are some things that the city would like to see more of, particularly as we've had these conversations where, whether it's fire service, or police, or any of those types of things where those, the funding of those services comes out of general fund revenues, is a good idea to focus on where job growth could be. Obviously, we will need more residential to support some of the things we're focusing on as a community. If you're familiar with the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, where there is, there are critical needs in housing, particularly in low to moderate income, workforce housing, there are critical needs in those areas. However, those are not necessarily, and typically not fiscal, a fiscal benefit to the city budget, but they are necessary for the community. And so having an appropriate balance of both job growth and housing needs is a good thing to focus on. So I'll pause there for a minute. That's kind of a lot, a lot of information, and I think I gave you just a little bit of a general overview. Do you have any questions at this point?
Mr. Dana?
In my naivety, I must ask this question, which arises out of the discussion about annexation and inter-jurisdictional cooperation. And so I ask myself, I say, is, will it work if in fact there can be a somehow a marrying or a conjugating together of the forces of annexation on the one hand, and, and the benefits of inter-jurisdictional cooperation on the other? Is that a question worth entertaining?
Certainly. We would, we would love to have a coordinated land use plan with Oxford Township or Butler County. It's essentially their staff. That hasn't happened. So we don't necessarily know what parts of the township, the township would like to sort of give up from green space. So, but I think the, the general community doesn't necessarily see the jurisdictional boundaries. They see it as one community. So many of the people that live outside the Oxford corporate limits utilize the services that are within the corporate limits.
If they see it that way, that's an asset to the, to the process, isn't it?
Correct.
All right. I think I'm sufficiently informed for the, thank you.
Could just boil it down to the questions that will face the planning commission and council, just so I understand them. The first one is to whether the city wants to support either by initiating the annexation or, or at least not oppose annexation. So that's the first choice. And, and I do appreciate that we're involving the planning commission in, you're anticipating a planning commission recommendation to council about annexation?
If time allows.
Okay.
If not, then you have two representatives, yourself and Mr. Bracken, obviously, that can speak to council.
So that's the first question about whether the city, and like you say, whether we feel it's a good idea. And, and even if they initiated, the city could object, and then that would be.
Correct. So there's two things the city is by law supposed to respond to.
Okay.
Which is a statement of services, like which services would the city provide? And the other one is either a consent or an object to the annexation. We did get a request from the architect to have a pre-filing staff meeting. So it seems like there's some, some interest in having a more detailed discussion, which we haven't had in the past, so that's a good thing.
Okay, so that's the first question. And the next question is what the zoning should be of it coming in, and which I think you also anticipate thinking about what we think the land use designation should be. But then there would be a need to decision, and if we, if we didn't do anything and it came in, it would be the B3. But we could have a conversation in the planning commission about what the recommendation of the zoning would be. Okay, so, and that would be in the future. That's like step two. And then if it were, if it were to come in like that, and it were a hotel, because it wouldn't necessarily need to be a hotel, it could be something else under that zoning, then it could potentially be a conditional use. Like if it were a hotel, it would be a conditional use discussion, and that would be another subsequent step?
Correct.
Okay. So not all the things we need to decide tonight, but those are the steps that are ahead.
So a question off Dr. Porthrich, and that was a question I had, is hotels are one of the many conditional use topics that follow to the purview or a commission?
Correct.
So I have a question, then I don't know what the other things would be. So my question is, if, if things proceed through, and, and, please correct me if I'm wrong, the township in Ohio, townships don't have a board that is similar to or has a purview of planning or even council. The township boards really have a very narrow scope on what they vote on as far as planning, or as, because you said it was at the county board of zoning appeals. Is this a county vote, or does the township have?
This particular township doesn't have a, its own board.
Okay.
But many townships do.
Okay.
So in this case, it defaults to the Butler County boards, because this township does not have its own separate planning agency.
So Oxford Township has the ability and right to have it, but in its absence, it defaults to the county supervisors?
And it's, Oxford Township doesn't have the adequate staff or budget.
Okay.
To staff its own planning or zoning boards, so Butler County does it on their behalf.
Okay.
But the Oxford Township still has its own zoning map, and its own zoning resolution that Butler County enforces.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate the clarification. So if this goes through right now, it's township property. So if it goes through their process and there's an annexation, hypothetically, we inherit what they decided, y- yes or no? Is there any opportunity for our planning commission to say, hey, so this is actually in the city, will be in the city, should be in the city, here's what we think? Or is it, hey, look, we did all this stuff, do you want it, yes or no?
So city council can require an annexation agreement, which would establish the zoning as part of the agreement to annexation. So, but if city council doesn't do that, then your first statement is correct, the township zoning would prevail.
Okay, because just thinking of this from a real estate context, I remember when we sold our house, they told us, yes, you can take your curtains and your pictures, but you can't remodel the kitchen, because they bought a certain thing. So I just, I'm concerned about the sequencing here. Just kind of, it seems like, hey, we're going to go through this process, would you like to, you know, play later, or annex us later? I just, I think things are extremely out of sequence here, so that's kind of where I'm, I'd say I'm concerned. It just seems like the, the example I thought of is this is like the guy buying the tux, renting the venue, getting everything set, and then going asking somebody they just met to get married. It just seems like, yes, all the steps and boxes were checked, but it just doesn't seem like it was done right. So I'm concerned that we're gonna have a hotel or something that is done under one rule set, and then we inherit it. Because that is one of the main points, purposes, and purviews of this board, especially with zoning, and designations, but then specifically with planned unit developments, conditional use, things of that nature.
The county staff are simply responding to their, what they are presented, and so they really treat it as our project. They are not planning to issue a building permit without a utility connection agreement of some kind. So I think what's happening in the county is kind of an unnecessary process, unless they could come up with their own utilities, which would be very expensive. So there is, there's, there's a, there's a risk, but it's a pretty small risk.
Okay. And this is just different than other annexation discussions we've had.
To you, to whom, to whom or to what are you making the case that you made at the bottom of page 60 with respect to site design? That is the case that says, that says, there are many factors, other factors to consider that could be advantageous to the city and the surrounding neighborhoods, neighborhoods, if the property were annexed into the city versus being developed in this house township. Now, what you have here, starting with roadway and sidewalk connectivity, and then going on to page 61 with the other items, which would put us in a superior position. I'm trying to figure out, is that being made to the, to us on the board of the planning commission? Or is it something that's being taken to the county?
The county has recognized that our requirements are more thorough than theirs, and so I'm essentially reciting that for your benefit. Because I think in some other cases in the past where we've had even rezoning requests on annexations, there's been a really strong focus on the site plan, but that's a separate process. And so I don't want you to get too hung up on the details.
Understood.
To just be reassured that if it does go through the city process, there will be a more thorough review of it than if it were to be developed under the county rules.
Understood. I'm also struck by, if I may, just one other point, which is on 5900 land use, which, which speaks about, the commission can and should recommend a land use designation. And it seems to me that's pretty powerful. That is, here we are in a position, you're being asked to consider a land use designation. Seems to me, your discussion at the top of page 60, which ends with, a planned development overlay could further refine, refine the expectations of the city in lieu of zoning code modernization. Seems to me all of these are ones that, again, the commission is being asked to sign, to sign off on, to come up with, with a, a land use designation. I just want to make that point clear.
Well, planning can be messy. And you don't always have all the policies and the rules in place at the time that you want them. And so you, you do the best you can with what you have. And so I've just given some examples of things that would reassure us that it could possibly work out if city council decided that annexation was appropriate.
And that does, thank you.
So do you want us to sequence? I mean, like, we're not making a recommendation to council, like, we're just having a conversation. But are there particular things you want feedback? Like, do we want to move through some of the questions? Or was there more that you were going to present?
No, that was all. I think I would, I would just like to see you all go around individually and maybe give, give your reaction. I think that would be helpful to staff. And then we will work with the owner. We've gotten some indication today from the architect for the owner, saying that they would like to meet. And that will be helpful to us to kind of be, give a better prediction on what we think should happen next, so that we can prepare for a potential filing of the petition. I'm still planning to go to the county zoning board meeting, because we don't know what the next step will be. But maybe it will get tabled or withdrawn, and we'll work with the city together. I don't know yet.
I'm perfectly fine if we just go around. I'll relax.
I have one other question that hopefully someone can answer. Does Oxford have a transient occupancy tax or a bed tax?
Yes.
How mu, how much is it?
It's 6%.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have any opinions on that?
Oh, well, I, I, I agree this is messy, and I do think that I would be open to a zoning that would accommodate a hotel in this location. It seems like a good location for a hotel, to me.
So, you know, we have some, I would say that, I'm going to start with, I don't like, is that I don't like the backdoor way of approaching stuff to come into the city. It's been a while since we've had one of these, but everything on South Point was basically came through the county first as a PUD, and was approved that way, and had a certain momentum, and then it came in. And I think that if we're going to do something, I want it to be coming into the city, and we're in at the ground floor of the conversation, and not inherit something. So, so I don't like that part of it. People are entitled to approach it, but I guess we have the water, so that is a bargaining chip in our favor. I do, what I do like is, A, that I like that we're having a conversation about annexation in relation to our goals, which we've not done in the past. I love the idea that the planning commission, if we can work out the timing, could make a recommendation to council about whether it initiates or accepts. I mean, I think that's, that's a major step forward for the city of Oxford. So procedurally, and this is the perfect test case for that. You know, I think that, does something like this come in? Do we leave it rural? So I think it's good that we're having a conversation. I hope the timing can work out. You know, I wish, I, I understand why we didn't do any extratorial, extraterritorial designations, but instantly, it's like you're left ad hoc, figure it out parcel by parcel. But I think that we've got enough knowledge, and we could make good recommendations about what the designation would be and what the right zoning would be, you know, even just kind of absent that. So in terms of openness, I, this seems like a developable parcel that's adjacent to campus. It has a much higher value than it's currently, it will be developed in the future as something. So I'm open to it coming into the city. This is not some farm field that I would like to see preserved. I think it's going to be something, and so I'm open to annexation, on the condition that the conversation be about that we set what the zoning is. If you look at what B3 is, it's a wide-open zone, automobile service stations, not as conditional uses. I mean, it's like, so we need to exert some control through our zoning, so I think we could find the right kind of zoning. And, and we're not yet there in terms of the proposed use, but I think the proposed use were to go forward. use were to go forward is not an inappropriate use for this site.
It's not like for me?
Not an inappropriate use for this site.
Right.
You know, as a person who's booking hotels near college campuses, it's nice if the hotels are adjacent to the campus and not two miles from town out on the state highway. Um, and the fact that Miami University is contemplating, uh, a hotel in this area, but what I would wanna do is, this is, we're not there yet, but I would only wanna do this if we had careful design conversations about how to make this work with Miami, how it connects with Miami, how it connects with seven thirty-two. I think something like this could be really great, if done right, um, with the stakeholders around the table. So, yeah, I'm, I'm open if the process is done properly.
Mr. Bracken?
Yeah, I agree with all that, and also your previous comments about the sequence of things and, and having control. I think the closer that we get to a typical review and recommendation from planning and then council, the better. Yeah, so I would love to see an agreement that sort of gets us there.
What, what thing you said?
I'd love to see an agreement that sort of allows for us to do a typical review and recommendation, as if we already owned it, since we're going to own it as a, as a city.
Okay, good.
I mean, really, I agree with everything that's been said so far, um, but I do, I do think that it's very important that we have control over how it's gonna look, how it's gonna, you know, go to the road, whatever, like, this should be something that we talk about. Um, and so I think annexation is, is great ahead of time, and this, this order of things is something that I also notice, so, um, but yeah, I don't have much to add to that, just that this is, you know, a very good location for a hotel, and it would be very beneficial to Oxford from an economic standpoint.
Well, no, I think what Dr. Pritchard said in particular is, is what I would like to hitch my, my wagon to, as it were, which has to do with the city's role, which has to do with the city's control, if I have you, what you have said directly. If that's the case, then I wholeheartedly embrace the approach and the particulars of that approach that Dr. Pritchard has outlined.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Ah, boy, where to begin with this one? I guess same, I'm open to it coming into the city, 'cause it is, I didn't realize that that, I've known about this parcel for decades, we used to mow grass adjacent to it. So one of the things with the site is, I've watched it over the coming decades, kind of operate as an unregulated landfill. There used to be a giant ravine there that we would play in, and over the past forty years, it's been filled in, I don't know with what, which is a question I have.
I hear some other things.
Yeah, could be. So, yeah, if we, if we get the process right, and we get some stakeholders here, and I'm looking at the map, we've got some residences nearby, they don't know about it, I'm sure Miami doesn't know about it. I don't know how they would feel, you know, again, there, there wants to be a connection with that parking lot, so that, that would have to be worked out, you know? There's gonna be a connection with North Campus Avenue, whether we would like it or not, but via a dirt path, so that would be worked out. So, yeah, if we, if we can get the process in line, um, I think we need to talk about it, but again, I, I don't like that access to seven thirty-two, because essentially, that's a, that's a blind curve at fifty-five miles an hour. 'Cause I went and, I parked at the dog park and walked down the street there, and that could, we could create a really horrible intersection there, and we don't control the speed on seven thirty-two, so. So, you know, I'm open to it, but there's a lot of things we need to work out.
I kind of already shared some of my perspective. Uh, I do appreciate, uh, your recommendation of the speed, because, um, Mr. Perry and I and, and Mr. Moore, on an unrelated case, have been talking about, uh, a parcel where the speed is high in entrance and visibility, so I, I think that's, that's something we're trying to measure twice and cut once. I, I just wanna reiterate, uh, the sequencing, um, simply because, again, if there is clear, intentional, and, I guess, i- i- if the intent is to join the city, I think the proper thing is to involve the city. The sequencing, while, while I applaud the fine print cleverness, I also am very concerned because I think the city has done quite a good job. I'm just even thinking what you said with, uh, schools. One of, one of the things that drives me crazy when I go down Lynn Street is, it is on-off, on-off, on-off sidewalk. And I could see this being something where, uh, it was approved, and the county doesn't require it, and the township doesn't know, and the next thing you know, we have kids trying to get to Kramer who are one point eight, nine miles, and we're missing sidewalks. So, um, I, I think that we have to, you know, put the horse in front of the cart on this one, um, otherwise, I, I think, uh, it's, it's not a bad idea. I just think, um, maybe, maybe the approach and/or process are not, uh, where I would expect them to be.
And can I just make one point, as I think Sam was saying, let's not focus on the design aspects of it, but let's not assume a hotel, you know? That could be a really attractive use to us, but let's say we then zone this GB, so it could be a hotel. Our GB is almost nearly as wide open for zoning district as, as Butler County's B three is. So I think that, like, we need to be cautious along the way, so that if there, you know, that we have guardrails as to what could actually happen here. Too often in Oxford, we've had something dangled in front of us, and something else gets substituted in its place. And so I think a hotel sounds great, I'm not saying it's not gonna be a hotel, but we just need to be cautious that we have, and this could be, for example, in an annexation agreement, I, we've not really done development agreements, but that their terms to the annexation could be agreeable.
And to your point, um, previous discussions, I know it's come up multiple times, the minute you rezone it, it is not rezoned, so you can do this. It is rezoned for the zone. So, great point.
Thanks for your comments.
All right. Well, as these are discussion items, uh, we're just gonna move on to the zoning code
Ready? Thank you again. The term zoning code modernization, uh, came up in the earlier discussion, uh, that's something that was in the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, uh, matrix. It's something that we are actually trying to get started on even this year, possibly. We've got some, uh, major issues with, as you know, there's a nationwide housing crisis, and we are feeling it here as well, and some of the obstacles for developing housing are our own codes. And this is not, this is not just an Oxford problem, it's, it's everywhere. But, that's gonna be a really big project, we want to make sure that when we do that, uh, we're considering the impact on historic assets, Historic and Architecture Preservation Commission. So we're trying to combine both a review of historic asset, historic assets, updating design guidelines, and modernizing zoning code to assist with both economic development and housing growth. Because that's such a big project, there are some small code changes that we've been thinking about for a long time, and I've got one, one that I really wanna get moving on, uh, which is a procedural one, uh, and that is the, something as small as a variance approval, uh, that only is good for six months, has been really problematic. Uh, people miss the deadline, you know, so a setback variance, a lot with variance, uh, anything like that, if they don't get their building permit application submitted, um, before that six months, then they have to come back again. We actually had one that I think came through BZA three times because of the deadlines, and it's just a waste of staff time to keep re-litigating the same thing over and over again. Uh, so, uh, twelve months is a fairly common, uh, deadline that we have in other aspects of the code. Uh, it could maybe even go longer, but that was just an example of one of the things that was highlighted in a memo, uh, from Zach many months ago. And so that's in that first section, in that procedural section. There's others in there, I, that's really the only one that I wanna do right now, right away. Um, I'm not really interested in doing the other ones, they're a little bit more complex, and we could roll those into our overall zoning code modernization. So if you could give me the green light to do that small one, I would like to do that. The code says that planning commission should be reviewing and recommending changes on zoning code. Council could actually do it on its own, but we wanna respect your input as well. This is a fairly, uh, fairly simple one. But happy to answer any questions, or we can get into some of the, the ones before. You may remember the work session, those of you that were on planning commission at the time, maybe Mr. Smith was the only one that's changed since then, but we did it at, um, at LCNB, there in the, in the, um, workroom up in the upper level. So, there were some other ones too that are procedural, uh, related with subdivisions. You may remember, uh, Mr. Hall with Al's Landing, coming, I think, both to planning commission and council, uh, and maybe even, uh, actually, one of the engineers from Bear Becker came and, and, and requested a procedural change because of the way our subdivision rules require a, um, a recording, and bonding, and all of these financial obligations before any work can start. And so that's, in their, in their, um, in their words, it's like paying for it twice before you even get started. And so, um, obviously, rules don't get put in place unless there was some problem in the past, which is probably what happened. Uh, but we're trying to look for what those obstacles might be, um, that we can remove. Uh, I think the pendulum has swung back and forth over the years where, um, there's been, um, sort of no sunset, or no expiration of everything, and now some of our expirations are so short, it's hard for people to get their financing, get their permits, and get their project, uh, before they have to start over again because of an expiration. So just, those kinds of things, uh, I think we would like to move forward on. But the things like the alley lots, that's a lot more complex of a conversation. Um, the, the lot splits and consolidations, uh, we're gonna probably have to use a, um, a special council on that, uh, because of the state law and subdivision code, um, that's gonna be more complex too. That needs a major, uh, a major update, um, as well. But really, just the procedural things on timelines are the main thing that I'm wanting your--
May I just ask a question? Have you enunciated exactly what this, this proposal would be, that would enable, enable you to, uh, work more expertisically and efficiently?
The, the one I'm asking for tonight is to extend the variance approval from six months to twelve months.
Right, okay, that's all.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. And, and again, I, I don't disagree with the six or twelve, but I know that, um, if nothing has changed content-wise, and it's merely a calendar issue, are there tools or mechanisms, um, either where staff, or, you know, let's say the chair or vice chair, similar to minor amendment, where we wouldn't have to bring it in front of the full commission and, and, you know, set parameters, like if it's a mere extension of a calendar or time, that it's signed off administratively, or?
Yes, that can be done. Mr. Moore and I have talked about that, uh, a lot, because every time we set an agenda and come be, you know, it's just taking your time and our time, uh, so you just have to kind of determine, what level of trust do you wanna put in staff that will continue on, knowing that staff changes?
Yeah.
And economy changes, so, um, so yes, that can definitely be done. We have, we think, still, home role authority, so we can, we can do that.
Correct, and, and it could be a yes and. We could, uh, somewhere down the road, move or, or propose six to twelve month as, as a timeline, but then, you know, put in, put in permission that, uh, one six-month extension is, you know, April, so, I mean, we can, we can do those kinda things.
Yes, and we've even talked, Mr. Moore and I, about, um, widening out the latitude on even dimensional variances, because some of the things that we're going to the zoning board for are so minor, that it's hardly worth having the hearing. You know, let's spend our, uh, our capital on more substantial impacts, uh, or even, you know, use variances, those kinds of things, maybe they're okay again, you know? So the pendulum does swing back and forth from time to time, and we want, we want you to give us the authority to spend our time on things that are gonna be impactful to the community, and not always procedural types of things.
Perfect.
So, um, so is that the only kind of agenda item that you're thinking in terms of code changes for twenty-three?
Uh, I think we could have some more, but that is, that's all I've got for you this month. Uh, I think we could, we're trying to now assemble our funding for zoning code modernization, and so depending on, uh, when the funding will come, and if and when council, uh, amends the budget to make that happen, we'll determine whether we do more in twenty-twenty-three or not. Because if we can't get started on zoning code modernization until twenty-twenty-four, then we may be coming back in July and August. These are some things we wanna get started on now, until we can get the funding in the twenty-twenty-four budget.
We could forward a proposal to the council to act on this.
We're, actually, we are starting to work on that now, um, because there are some grants out there, and there are still some, in, being on CIC, you may have heard about this, um, there are still some, um, American Rescue Plan, uh, money that is directed by council toward, um, economic development, and since economic development is tied to zoning code modernization, some of the money for that could potentially be used for zoning code modernization.
Uh-huh. That's in the offing.
It's, it's an option.
So, I guess my follow-on is that, and this comes from a place where there's a certain degree of tension between being an elected official who, you've got, I've got like two and a half years left, I'm impatient to see the changes, we, you know, if you're a climate action person, you see the scope of the challenge, and you, you need to dig into it, but also cognizant that we can only do so much. But my basic feeling is, is we should be optimizing our agenda each year within the constraints of staffing and, and, and if there are consultants available. So to me, like, I lean into, like, I would rather have, uh, tried to do more, even if we don't make it, rather than do less. Like, I mean, I, I, I love to have a canceled meeting, I love to get out of a meeting quickly, but when I look at the, with, when I look at the wish list, there's a lot there. And so what you could say is, well, let's, let's not do it this year, let's do the, the zoning code modernization, which sounds great, but like, you know, uh, our city manager has the metaphor about eating, you know, how you eat an elephant, one bite at a time. Revising all of our zoning code would be like eating an elephant in one sitting, you know, like, if we think any one of those is complicated, touching on all of them simultaneously, like, at one level, there's efficiency in that, but you could just blow up your brain with how many pieces are, they're, so, so to me, like, I mean, at one level, you could just download an entire code and then go with the new one, but if you thought about all the different conversations that are, that could be had inside our zoning code, it sounds like a multi-year project to me. So from that point of view, the more we can dig into it now with the simple things, like I say, the timing, let's do it. I mean, we just had to spend time on a six-month conditional use approval. Like, why do our conditional use approvals need to be six months?
It's been come on.
But, yeah, let's, I mean--
Our first business idea.
Yeah, we, so we're spending so much time reacting to things like staff time renewing, that council will have to have two readings on the extension of--
No, it stops at planning commission.
Okay.
The code actually used to say that it went to council, and then it was later changed.
Well, so, there's a little bit of sanity in the process. But, you know, but we, we do, be, some of the work comes to us either because it's generated by other people, or it's generated by our own code. Like, you're dealing with administrative stuff that just keeps you busy, 'cause it's built into the code. Well, let's, let's make those things more efficient, so we can dig into the substantive revisions. But like I said, this is just me volunteering, it's easy for me to say, 'cause I don't have to be the staffer who's gonna come up with the ordinance and all that stuff. But, you know, I, I think we have really a lot of smart people around the room, and I would love for us to start eating the elephant now. 'Cause all the consultant dollars in the world are not gonna help us, I mean, if we have to go through each one, ugh, it's gonna be a big job.
So for each meeting, we, we would, we would attack?
I, you know, I, I, the, the staff has to pace what they can do, I'm just volunteering that I would love for us to dig into some things on this list, um, rather than just react to things that come in our way. I would love to be making forward progress, like, within the constraints of what you have to do day to day, so.
We have started talking to a couple other cities who have, have gave us the, have given us the experience of the full elephant versus the, the pieces, and, um, and if, Bowling Green has just done the overall zoning code update, and it's amazing how the community focuses on, just kind of lashes on to maybe a couple big items, and some of the things that you really think would be transformational, don't get talked about. And so, that can be good because of, those can serve staff time, but at the same time, if you're wanting to have those broader community conversations, it doesn't necessarily happen because it's so many changes at one time.
Well, and I want us to be, I mean, you, you can see how those little code distinctions can generate hassles, you know, so I think we wanna make sure the code is right, and you guys are really detail-oriented people, like, so to revise the whole zoning code, I think by due diligence-- people, like, so to revise the whole zoning code, I think by due diligence, whether the public's paying attention to all of those bites of the elephant or not, we would really wanna make sure each one of those, and, and we have vested property rights that are vested around our, I mean, think of how complicated conversations have been about lot widths, you know, and accessory dwelling units and like, so I'm not saying that we can't move this through expeditiously, I guess, I'm just saying that I'm not as confident that this is, I just think that there are a lot of complexities to it, especially if we're gonna touch at all on people's kind of vested rights and stuff and, anyway, that was, that was just me volunteering that I would love for us to start thinking about.
That was him volunteering you to do stuff.
Well, I mean, again, I'm happy, and I mean, we've, in, in the past, the, the Planning Commission has been very involved at the work session in working through code language, writing code language, and obviously that doesn't substitute for staff, but I think the right, we can help, you know, if we can find the right way to help.
So I have one additional ask, but then also kind of a clarification of something that Mr. Perry and I have talked about, but just time and, and staff availability haven't allowed for. So if, as you and Mr. Moore and the rest of the staff look at things, I, I know you said, for example, that you have the one pressing issue, if there's other low hanging fruit that are similar to it, I think it would make sense to, to go through and find the three or four things where there's an administrative, okay, hey, instead of having to present this and vote on it for the extension, we take the extensions and this and that and maybe kind of clump them and say, here's the four things we think would be administrative approvals similar, and then model them after like minor amendment or something. I think that would save your time also because you might find some consistency in, you know, four different actions that we could simply make more administrative for you. Or any other, that's just kind of what came to mind, but, or any other kind of hunk and chunk, if you will, that makes sense to staff. It, it may not be, okay, the common thread is, these are all things that could be administratively approved and might be things where it's, okay, here's four setback issues, while we're talking about setbacks, let's just do setbacks. And then the other thing you and I have talked about is planning work sessions where, and I, I don't wanna say subcommittees or anything of that nature, but when we-
You're speaking a little bit to that.
Sorry. Work sessions, and, and I don't wanna have subcommittees per se, but where we can work, you know, where staff brings a, a group of recommendations and we work through them, and then, you know, maybe a month later, we work through them.
Yeah.
We just, I, I think we've canceled one or two meetings, but a lot of it also had to do with, just, I mean, time, staff, I think, was it like December or something we canceled, and that was probably more for a calendar than anything. Any other food for thought for Mr. Perry and Mr. Moore?
I agree with all that.
Okay.
So can we go ahead and do the critical one tonight, or are we just discussing it? The, the six month extending it to a year?
What I'm hearing is you want us to come back with a package, instead of us going ahead with council for the six to 12 month on the variance.
But I would argue, why don't we just vote for this now and do that in the future?
So food for thought. We did say these were discussion items, so for the fidelity.
But that's the kind of the sense, I mean, there's the sense of the commission. You know, I, I will say for one, that my sense is, is there's no objection to make reasonable deadlines and it doesn't need to come through us here, that's my, so you're talking, it could go directly to the council.
It could, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, is there, does any, I mean, not to-
I don't know that one just, I don't know that one month is gonna make a big difference.
Well-
No, I think the reasons to favor it, because you've outlined how time would be spent and what the impact might be, which, which is attractive.
I mean, actually, but those things are administrative things, which I feel like we could have insight in, but it's like, it's your, if you have a feeling there's a need for an administrative change that doesn't substantively alter what we do, then-
This would have to be approved by council anyways. So, if you read our bylaws, technically I can represent the will of the commission, so if it's okay with everybody, I can work with Mr. Moore and Mr. Perry based on our conversation and find those straightforward administrative, I hate to say clerical, but those kinda things that really are kind of the, the barriers and then-
Amen.
Work with them to bring it to council.
Amen.
That'd be, this is how we can also take advantage of time in between meetings. I mean, I think we can have active, an active chair, really can, can help move things along. We can have task-
An active vice chair.
Vice chairs, we can have task groups in between, you know? I mean, if we have some formal subcommittees, then you have to, but, you know, if we have a task group, like, hey, let's get three people together to work on this, it's, I think we could move things along in between.
Just call them, which is just, refer to them as task, task.
Like, yeah, like a task, you know, like a working group, and it's an informal thing to focus on something in between, just to help guide staff, but not create another meeting minutes and all that stuff.
Well, and except for Mr. Smith, yes.
The one thought that I had in listening to this, and hopefully everybody can hear me, is that it seems to me that this issue of six months versus 12 months versus administrative, those are, that's process.
Yeah.
And if it's process driven, it would seem to me to be appropriate to have your chair work with staff as opposed to substance. If it's substance, clearly that's a more detailed discussion.
Perfect.
And, and so I think if you think about it in that way, it might even eliminate some of the discussion you're having now.
That makes sense to me.
Yes.
Just so long as we have some sunsets. I mean, I'm glad we've added sunset dates on our PUDs and subdivisions, cause things can live in perpetuity, so sunsets are good. Six months is, in the building world, seems awfully short, so.
Okay, we can build that into what's being proposed.
Perfect.
All right, thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, we have no other agenda items, so if anyone would like to motion to adjourn, I would be-
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Mr. Dana with the win and Mr. Bracken with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, we are adjourned.